Mrs. Cattelli.
All right, first I have to thank some people. We had a community justice walk on Thursday, and a lot of people helped out. The district attorney was there, Jennifer McCambridge, with her interns Jared Miero, Eric Viscuzzo, Amanda Cook, and Maria Bertha. The Department of Inspections was there, Carl Graziano, Tom Olesky, Todd Cortez, Jack Liptai, and Patty Fowler. Police officers Paul Reed and Tony Guida. And during the process, nine cars were towed, six houses were condemned, and 18 notices were posted, and police filed several litter citations. So, the kickoff of our new program was very successful. It is also happening in the Hill section, and I believe West Scranton did have a crime community justice. Do you know who it is, Bill?
I don't know how active it is now. There's Mr. Ranikowski, Mr. Miel, those people. Yeah. Mrs. Tallow, I don't know if they're how active they are.
Jerry died, I know. Well, if you need any help over there, Bill, if somebody wants to get it going, it's an excellent program.
All right. I'll pass that on.
And I'll offer to help you.
All right.
Get it going. It is needed over there.
I'll pass that on to whoever's left there.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Because we're happy to get it going again, and all the sections of the city should have benefit of it. It's a program sponsored by the district attorney's office, and it's an excellent program. So, anyone who's interested, please let us know. Kay, you can call Kay, and we can maybe set you up with the right people to get it done in your neighborhood. The next thing, I'd like to make a motion that we give a proclamation to Douglas and to Ian Miller. I don't believe, and I do sincerely hope that we'll have other students that will participate, and they're welcome, and maybe you can hang the signs at Scranton High next year, and I'll hang some at West. But I believe they did a fine job, and I think that we should give them a proclamation for their hard work.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was it?
Thank you. I just need a letter to Michael Wallace. I've been having trouble, Kay, getting ahold of Mr. Wallace. I don't normally have you do these, but I can't seem to get them. There's a property at the corner of Pittston Avenue and Palm Street, and there's a tractor trailer in the rear, and the neighbors wanted to know if it qualified under the zoning. Also, there's a property at 123-125 Prospect Avenue that's being gutted, and from what I understand, the owner wants to make it a six-family, and it has not been a six-family in at least five years. So, I want to make Mr. Wallace aware of that property. I read an article in the paper today about the legislators. Representative Todd Echus is urging committee action on his anti-blite legislation in the state, and it would enable municipal officials to take action against absentee landlords of derelict properties. Why should we allow absentee owners to further degrade the value of properties while hard-working Pennsylvanias struggle to hold on to their own? So, I'd like to make another motion that we send Mr. Echus a letter supporting his bill.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a lot of motions today. My last motion is to table the two pieces of legislation for Channel 61, ECTV. I would like to table them to get some more information of some of the allegations that have been made here. I don't want to go the full gamut of waiting for this and waiting for that, but I am willing to investigate some of the financial discrepancies in the information that has been received. So, I ask that we table it until we get some further information.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm hoping that we can meet with these people and ask them face-to-face the questions that we have, and then move on from there.
All in favor of tabling items 6F and 7A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I actually only have one thing to speak about. Shiloh Baptist Church, every year, has a wonderful program where they provide backpacks for children going to school with all the necessities for the children to start off with. And this is a great program, and I believe to donate, they're looking for 500 kits for these backpacks, and they're looking for about $12 each to donate. So, if anyone, please contact Carol Mason at the Shiloh Baptist Church. And I'm not going to read the number out, but you can contact us here at the office, and I will make sure that we have it. This is a program that will send the kids back to school with all, I can't believe we're talking about back to school, but we have to now, but to send them back with all their necessities. And this is a wonderful program, and I just wanted to talk about. Thank you.
Mr. Cartwright?
Yes, I've, a lot of people have been asking for it about, two or three years now, from the 1100 block of Washman Street back to maybe the 1600, 1700 block, if not further, about having it paved. And I guess we all know how difficult it is to get a street paved in this city. But I have to check into this further. My understanding is, I don't know if people recall, last year, many streets were paved, and they were paved by the utilities because the utilities went in and dug up the ground, and then they were required to pave them. I'm hearing that possibly it's going to happen the full length of Washman Street, that the utilities are going to come in and dig up and put down new pipes. So, hopefully, you'll get your street paved. I will check that and confirm it. But that said, Kay, everything I have here, I guess, is going to go to DPW. Meridian Avenue off of Luzern Street, which would be heading south until it gets to the Elm Street Bridge, is beyond patching. You just can't patch it anymore. It's ineffective. It's terrible. I believe it would fall under OECD funds to do it, the Lord of Modern Economy. I would ask you to send a letter asking that they would consider that, somewhere on the top of the list, to get it paved. It's just, it's beyond patching. You just can't patch it anymore. So, if we can ask Mr. Brazil to respond to me on that anyway. People from the Yezu Development have asked me, they said the street sweeper came through right after the winter, and they would like to see if we could come up through that development one more time. This is me personally. There's a business called Cleveland's. I'm not quite sure the full name of it. It's where they wax cars. You can't pull, I was in there, and you can't pull out of there without your car sinking down. The road is eroded away, right where their driveway meets the road. So, it is the road, and it's not very wide, but it's very deep. If the DPW could take a look at filling that in. And I'll answer Mrs. Schumacher's question. I've asked about that machine for a couple of years now. I don't get an answer. I went and looked at it a year or two ago. It was down at the DPW complex. I think it's hiding out now down at the sewer authority, if I'm not mistaken. I had asked a long time ago if we weren't going to use it. I think it was a piece of equipment that we bought, and that we learned relatively quickly that it wasn't going to be effective for the city. And I asked back when they bought, I forget the dollar amount now, that if we weren't going to be able to use it, that we put it up for sale. So, we at least got something for it. I'm being told off the record by some DPW workers that it's not any good or anything now, just for the cost of whatever metal you can get out of it. So, I haven't gotten an answer, so I can't answer you. I've been asking for several years, even before Mr. Brazil was there, I've asked this question. But I think it's down, I think it's part of it, the sewer authority, the last I heard. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. Just a couple of things in response to, I don't know if Mr. Spraglia was asking about an amount on Lackawanna College. The only thing that I could find in the backup from last week was an amount of $8 million, but I don't think that's the amount that he was looking for. That's for whatever loan or whatever grant they're receiving is not to exceed $8 million. But that was the only dollar amount that was in the backup. To Mr. Powell, speaking about Kaiser Terrace, I was in, or I happened to be speaking with some people and about Kaiser Terrace, and just a refresher, I believe that we, as a council, voted that nothing would be done, as far as we were concerned, at Kaiser Terrace until we got approval from the city engineer. So, as that continues to move forward, hopefully, I would just reiterate to Mr. Powell that I believe that we're all in agreement with that, that nothing will be approved at Kaiser Terrace, as far as the council is concerned, until we have some assurances from the city engineer that it is acceptable. And to Mr. Elman, I just wanted to mention that the money that is being used from Friendship House for paving of streets was done with the agreement of Friendship House, that they were not, as Mrs. Cattelli said, they were not ready to start on the projects for which the money was granted. And so, in agreement with Friendship House, the money was moved to paving the streets. So, it wasn't taken from them. It was at least done with their agreement and the understanding that that money would then be reinstated to them when they were ready to move on with the projects. Also, last week, it was mentioned that the University of Scranton was charging some exorbitant rates for the use of the South Side complex for the soccer programs that were taking place there. That is, that was not true. In contact with the University of Scranton, they said that they, with agreement through the, whatever, I forget the name of the federation that runs the soccer program, but with their agreement, they were using the field at no cost. What, that they were being given the field at no cost to them, and that what happened was that a letter was sent to the person that was running the program stating that if, in fact, there were a cost, it would be given, that the letter stated this would be the cost of a rental. Apparently, the person in charge of the soccer program then sent the University of Scranton a check, thinking that that was a rental fee. The check was returned to them, and told that the letter was sent only because of, I believe, tax requirements that the university has to state, you know, any gifts that they give, and put a dollar amount to it. Any fees that are being charged, any fees that are being charged to people playing there are not being charged by the University of Scranton. There may be fees being charged by the federation that's running the soccer program, but there are no fees from the University of Scranton. And the other clarification, the University of Scranton is in ownership of the South Side complex. Despite the fact that it is still in, that there are some, there is some litigation taking place, the University of Scranton does own the South Side complex. And so, they would have a right to charge anything that they wanted. And, oh, one last thing. At the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the city of Scranton was given an honorable mention, and Mayor Doughty an honorable mention, for their efforts to protect the city's tree canopy. It was, the first-place winners were the cities of Seattle and Carmel, Indiana, and then the city of Scranton was in an honorable mention category with Bartlett, Illinois, Chattanooga, Tennessee, Colorado Springs, Oakland, Phoenix, Pleasanton, California, San Francisco, and, as I said, Scranton. And that's all. Thank you.
Fifth order, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of council number 23, 2008, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the southerly side of Mulberry Street, SR 3027, from the now-vacated Hitchcock Court east to 1.75 feet east of the center line of Royal Way, Quincy Avenue vacated, the same distance as more particularly described on the map plan attached heretofore, to allow for sight distance for the driveway to Royal Way.
You've heard reading?
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I moved item 6A past reading by title.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
6B, reading by title, file of council number 24, 2008, an ordinance removing parking meters on the southerly side of Mulberry Street, SR 3027, from the now-vacated Hitchcock Court to McKenna Court, the same distance as more particularly described on the site plan attached heretofore, in the no parking zone established to allow for sight distance for the driveway of the new University of Scranton Campus Center.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I moved item 6B past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
6C, reading by title, file of council number 25, 2008, an ordinance amending file of council number 123, 2007, entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs as amended, to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, Home Investment Partnership Home Program, and Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG program, by transferring $216,628.42 from project number 05-154, Friendship House, and $24,371.58 from project number 05-154.1, Friendship House, to project number 0704, paving of city streets to include handicap curb cuts.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I moved item 6C past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
6D, reading by title, file of council number 26, 2008, an ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Scranton providing for an agreement of intergovernmental cooperation for the purpose of multi-municipal comprehensive planning by the city of Scranton and the adjacent municipalities of Abington Township, Clark Screen Borough, Clark Summit Borough, Dalton Borough, Dunmore Borough, Blendburn Township, Newton Township, North Abington Township, South Abington Township, and West Abington Township.
You've heard reading by title of item 6D. What is your pleasure?
I moved item 6D past reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, I believe next week, perhaps, we would table this prior to the reading, so that we might receive the final draft to read. And I believe in July, we'll be meeting with the SATHA representative.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Yes. July 15th is the date. I would assume that once we table it, if we table it next week, that we would wait until the 15th before it would be reintroduced.
That's what we said last week.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
6E, reading by title, file of council number 27, 2008, an ordinance approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license currently owned by Anne Marie Kulick, TA, Anne's Bar, 160 Boulevard Avenue, True Pennsylvania, 18512, license number R-15082, to Kendra A. Rocio Enterprises, LLC, TA, Belina, for the use at 2934 Bernie Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
You've heard reading by title of item 6E. What is your pleasure?
I moved item 6E past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
6F has been tabled. 6G, reading by title, file of council number 29, 2008, an ordinance accepting and ordaining a four-foot portion of land to widen a portion of Lavelle Court in the vicinity of the 500 block of Music Street to create a right-of-way to 20 feet.
You've heard reading by title of item 6G. What is your pleasure?
I moved item 6G past reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
Seventh order, 7A has been tabled. 7B, do you want to make any amendments before I read this?
This is the matter that I spoke to Attorney Kelly about. If you wanted to amend it now to 25 years, you can do that by motion, and then we could read it as a final reading.
I'll make a motion that we change item 7B from 50 years for the term to 25 years.
Second. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it, so move.
As amended. 7B, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 36, 2008, as amended, approving for adoption of the proposed amendment of the Articles of Incorporation of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority to increase the term of existence of said authority under the provisions of the Municipal Authorities Act of 2001.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B as amended.
Second. On the question?
Yes, I just wanted to repeat my position that was stated last week. The recreation authority sets the fees at NAOG. The council is left to pay the bills, and I believe it is council who should be setting the fees and making the decisions at that park, as it does with other neighborhood parks throughout the city of Scranton. Though a 25-year adjustment from a 50-year term is certainly an improvement, it is still a lengthy period of time. And I believe that as long as we're being asked, which in effect means you're being asked to pay these bills, you are doing so without, frankly, any input, because you would have to respond to individuals who are appointed by a mayor to an authority that oversees your greatest park, the jewel of parks throughout Scranton.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
No.
Mrs. Cattelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanucci?
Yes.
Mr. Cartwright?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution number 37, 2008, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a reimbursement agreement, number 04R007, with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Transportation, PNDOT, for the 500 block of Lackawanna Avenue project entitled Park, Plaza, and Pedestrian Court.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second. On the question?
Again, I'll reiterate what was said last week, but in a more brief fashion. I'm not against economic development. I was very supportive of this project in its initial stages. However, I can't vote to approve anything that's not going to include the two bookends or staples of the 500 block of Lackawanna Avenue, those being Coney Island and Buena Pizza.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
No.
Mrs. Cattelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanucci?
Yes.
Mr. Cartwright?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution number 38, 2008, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for the University of Scranton, 800 Lyndon Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for minor alteration of exterior to fit existing masonry opening to accommodate installation of elevator at the University of Scranton, Ullahama Clean Center, 342, 348 Jefferson Avenue, Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Cattelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanucci?
Yes.
Mr. Cartwright?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution number 39, 2008, approving the financing by the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority of certain capital projects for the benefit of Lackawanna College, a Pennsylvania non-for-profit corporation serving the public, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and the area served by Lackawanna College, to have projects provided by and financed through the authority, designating the mayor of the city, or in his absence, the president or vice president of the council of the city, as a person to act on behalf of the city council as the applicable elected representative within the meaning of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, authorizing such mayor of the city, or the president or vice president of the city of council, to take certain actions on behalf of the city council as such applicable elected representative, and authorizing other necessary and appropriate action.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chair for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of 7E. Second?
On the question?
There was a question raised earlier during the meeting regarding this legislation, I think by Mr. Spraglia, perhaps. And I know that, Mr. McGough, you tried to answer that under motions, but might we table this until we're able to get more firm financial information? And I think Mr. Spraglia also indicated there would be a public hearing on this issue where we might be able to obtain further details.
Is there a second?
I'm going abstain from voting on this totally, because in the past, and I believe it was political, but they said, because I teach at the police academy there, that I shouldn't be voting on any legislation for there. And so, rather than, and at the time, Mr. Wallace, I believe, checked with the Ethics Commission, said it wasn't an ethics violation. But in an effort not to send Mr. Menora through the same thing, I just said I would abstain from this. So, I'm just not going to comment on it.
Mr. McGough, I didn't really make a motion, though. I just asked if
Oh.
we might consider the motion, so.
I'm sorry. I would think that since there's no liability on behalf of the city in this, that we can approve it and perhaps find the answer to, I think Mr. Spraglia was just looking for what the total amount of their project was and what was going to be paid. And I think we can do that even once it's approved, since there is no liability.
It flows through the Health and Welfare Authority.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're just the travel-through for the money.
Yes, we're not responsible for any debt or, let's say, a failure of repayment. That would not fall on the shoulders of the city. However, it is the same constituency inevitably, so through the county, perhaps, you know, since you are a resident of Scranton and Lackawanna County, in that manner, you can be responsible for repayment.
Understood. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Cattelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanucci?
Yes.
Mr. Cartwright?
Abstain.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
That was 7E. Now, 7F.
7E, excuse me. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 40, 2008, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to execute and enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers, Local Number 2462, clerical union.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F. Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Cattelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Finucci?
Yes.
Mr. Cartwright?
Yes.
Ms. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted. No further business. Thank you for your cooperation, and I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Do certain things. I'm not sure what your, your jobs are, what you're required to do. But I do want to see people come up here and show leadership. You are our leaders. We voted for you. You voted for this, uh, this new, you voted for the, uh, for the city to go forward and you're holding it back. I don't know why, because everything I read, it's, I have to read between the lines. I, I hear bickering, I hear arguing, not just, you know, on all sides. Let's get rid of the bickering. Let's get rid of the, the little talk and let's talk issues. Let's get our city forward. I also am a, a multi-family owner of properties here and I love this city. I have put a lot of time and energy into this city and all I want to see is the best things go forward. I think that we are much safer than we were. Look at the city five, 10 years ago. You know, let's go forward. Let's do what we can. Let's be respected and let's stand up here and say what's good about Scranton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
With all due respect for the last speaker, this is not a show. This is not a production, unlike what happens on Channel 61 with the commercials, campaign commercials that are shown on Channel 61 with the mayor, where no one has an opportunity to come up and debate the mayor. It's all scripted. The other shows that his cabinet members go to that are all scripted. I'm sorry to say, and I mean no disrespect to the last speaker, this is government, this is live TV, and this is not scripted. Okay? I want to make that perfectly clear. And if it wasn't for this council, that young lady would not be able to speak up here because the first thing the mayor tried to do was shut down these chambers to keep the people from being able to speak and address their grievances to the city or give their opinions or just do something that's that darn First Amendment right to free speech. But I'm happy this young lady got up and, and, and made her, made her, uh, her statement tonight because this council, especially you, Mr. DeBilio, are the one who allowed these people to come here and say what they had to say. The other thing I have to talk about tonight is, uh, Mr. Jackowitz was here tonight. I was listening to some of the people speaking and, uh, he said, "It seems that money means power and power means money." Well, that's kind of been what's holding us down here for about the last hundred years in this town, in this area. Let me just tell everyone out there, all the little people like us, we have the power. When you go into and you close the curtain and you flick a switch, you have the power. If you think Mayor Doherty's doing a good job, you have the power to retain him. And if you think Mayor Doherty's not doing a good job, you have the power to remove him. We have the power. We have the numbers and we have the power. Not the rich, not the powerful, not the out-of-towners, not the big power brokers that usually is 80% of Mr. Doherty's campaign contributions. They don't have the power. We have the power. And if you don't believe me and if you don't believe other speakers that come up here, by all means, take your power and vote for Chris Doherty. That's your right under, under, under our constitution. The other thing I have to say is, there, there's a lot of talk about, I mean, this town is, a couple of speakers to this town is so divided and I, I know families that are fighting over this election. I, I don't know how to say this because frankly, I'm of special interest. I'm representing the firefighters' union when I'm speaking up here. But I've always tried to come up here and, and document what I'm saying and try to make it clear to what's really going on because maybe our unions have made mistakes 30 years ago, 20 years ago, but we have given and given and given and we trusted the people that came here 14 years ago to straighten out our town. And we were abandoned and politics were played and the city governments didn't follow the recovery plans, just like this mayor, that 70% of the people voted for his recovery plan, violated his own recovery plan. For instance, recovery plan said that all the city employees are supposed to have wage freezes. That's a fact of life. Do we like it to have wage freezes, to not have a raise for the last four years and have probably six or seven wage freezes in the last 14 years? No, we don't like that as employees. I don't think anyone that works that wants to have wage freezes. But it's a fact of life. Until it's gone and until the city is straightened out, it's a fact of life. But where is it saying in the recovery plan that every person that's a firefighter that comes to your house when you call 9/11 or every person that calls a police officer or people that expect at 7:00 in the morning their, their garbage to be picked up by city employees and people that call down here for zoning or clerks or anyone else that works in this building, we should have wage freezes, but the, the supervisors shouldn't have wage freezes. Supervisors should be given $5,000 raises and $10,000 raises. Please explain to me where in the recovery plan Chris Doherty had a right to give all these raises to everyone. Please explain to me where in the recovery plan, because we're supposed to cut expenses, that he can give no bid contracts at times 100 thou-, almost $100,000 more than what the low bid was for his campaign contributors. This is the most blatant pay-to-play, pay-to-play administration in my memory. And I can say it now because I'm getting older. I've been around a little while now. I mean, they say there's no money for police officers. I, I mean, we can talk about numbers. We can debate this for two years. Crime is up. I mean, is it not obvious to everyone? But we knock off police officers and Mayor Doherty says, "We can't afford that." But he can afford to send flowers to people that he knows on taxpayers' dime. He can afford to do no bid contracts. He can afford to put flowerpots in the streets. He can afford to give millions of dollars to people to build buildings downtown with a promise of jobs and no jobs come. But that's okay. Mayor Doherty made a statement. I've been coming here for years, before they were televised and before this council was sitting. And I said, "What was actually going on and what we've done to help the city get out of distress status?" And we've done it and it's documented and nobody's going to tell me we haven't. We've been giving up for, going backwards for 14 years. Our union, along with the other four unions, have given and given and given and we can document millions and millions and millions of dollars of savings. The point I'm trying to make is this. We've been saying that in the recovery plan, there was open-ended contract language, I'm sorry, open-ended, uh, language within the recovery plan that said the mayor had sole discretion to do whatever he wants without the security of impact safety studies, without the, without the security of many things. That's what we're fighting. We're not fighting economic things. We want a big giant race. That's not what we're fighting in arbitration. We're fighting management right language that to us is dangerous because we are sworn to protect the citizens of the city. We know what's going on. He does not know what's going on in the police and fire departments. We do. We live it. We work here. I've been here for 20 years. I'm trying to prevent firefighters and the citizens from being killed because a bean counter wants to save money without knowing the ramifications of what's going to happen if he makes these changes. He finally made a statement after three and a half years, because we've been asking for three and a half years, "What are your intentions under this language of Act 47?" And he finally said it, far as the fire department's concerned. He needs to cut the fire department by 2.4 or 2.5 million dollars or 30 positions. Now, does that mean he's going to lay off 30 guys? Does that mean he's going to try to go through attrition, which he can't because frankly, everybody already left? Very few people have their time to retire at this point.
Mr. Javaz, you, you, he said that. He said that to-
He said that to one of my members who called me up immediately and said, "The mayor told me," and I believe this guy, matter of fact, this guy's a friend with, of the mayor's. And he says, "What's going on?" And I said, "Well, he never, he never really said this exactly what his intentions are. But three weeks ago, I met with the mayor and he says, 'I need to get $4 million,' quote unquote, right to my face in his office, $4 million from the police and the fire contracts. And now he told my friend, 'I need 2.5 million or 30 guys or however you want to do it.' Meaning, we give up everything else. We can keep the guys. If we don't want to give up anything, we got to get rid of the guys somehow, some way." So I've been telling the people that we can fund, we can fund consultants and lawyers and, and, and more chiefs all over the place because we can afford that, to have bloated administration. And who's going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for his spending? You know who's going to pay for the spending? We are and you are with lower ta-, uh, taxes are not being lowered, but your public safety is going to be lowered. And finally, after three and a half years, he said it. He wants cuts in the fire department. What he wants in the police department? I don't know. I'm not privy to that. But he wants 30 positions or 2.4 million, however we want to do it. Your taxes aren't going down and I've been saying it for three and a half years and he finally said it to one of my members. He's going to reduce your public safety in the fire department. If that's what you want, vote for Chris Doherty. When's the last time a consultant, a lawyer, or one of his chiefs that he put on that raised the, the salaries here by 3.4 million dollars, that sit in these offices, that need consultants to do their jobs, picked up your garbage or fought your fires or chased bad guys out of your backyard? I've never seen one of these people do this. We do it. We're the ones, when you call and you pay your taxes, we show up. We're going to take the hit for his spending again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hi. Good evening, council, or good night. I don't know what time it is at this point.
Good evening.
Um, the first thing-
For the record, your, your name-
I'm sorry. Mary Ann, city homeowner, lifetime resident of Scranton and our taxpayer. The first thing I feel I want to do right now is to apologize to Mr. DeBilio for the woman who was here earlier that does nothing but bash Mr. DeBilio.
No apology needed.
You do not deserve it. Yes, yes. You know why? Because she comes up here week after week trying to push your buttons. She wants to get you going. And she has no morals whatsoever. Okay? She has no self-respect for herself and she has no respect for anyone else.
Mary Ann, that's, that's perfectly her right to be able to do that and I appreciate your concern.
Yeah. I don't appreciate-
That's okay.
-disrespect like that.
Thank you.
I really don't. Okay, um, I'm proud of the First Amendment, okay? Only if spoken truthfully. And, um, I was a raised an honest person and the mayor mentioned negativity and scare tactics happening in our city right now. They are not scare tactics. They are the facts. People need to listen and pay close attention. Okay, um, uh, I, I have been done walking the streets or even being out when it gets dark since a young girl got raped by Holy Cross Church. Okay? And there is crime in this city. And, um, I don't do it anymore. I don't walk. There is crime in this city. But in my opinion, you have to see the issues, you have to hear the promises that were made and pay attention to them and also know they're broken. They're broken. They're broken promises. Okay? We can't have that as city taxpayers. We cannot have that. And the scare tactic for me is the thought of this mayor getting reelected for four more years. That's my scare tactic. It's my opinion. And, um, it doesn't take like a rocket scientist to figure out that we are being betrayed. We are being, okay, I won't use the word lies, um, broken promises, however, but, um, and just to let everyone know, I've never been one to step on anybody's toes. So I'm not here to knock anybody down. But I've got a, I don't know, I'm going to try to make this as quick as I can. Um, I've never ignored anyone, okay? But last night, the mayor crossed the line with me. Okay? That's who brought me here tonight, my first city council meeting. So I am a little nervous if you bear with me. I found out last night what people meant when they were saying that Scranton has a snotty, cocky attitude of a mayor. Okay? That, in my opinion, was an understatement and he's definitely not for all the people. Last night, I'm going to have to take these off if you don't mind. I can't read with or without them. Last night after the debate, I politely walked over to Mayor Doherty. I reached out to shake his hand, told him it was nice to meet him and said, "With all due respect, mayor, why did the city tell me back in April, May of 2005 that the city has no money and will not have any money for at least three, four years? At least." Now, I was told they can send me a city loan application. I have an emergency with my roof and I thought I've called Habitat for Humanity and I explained this to the mayor. I called Neighborhood Association. I've called, spoke with HUD and I've spoke with the city. Okay? And I explained my situation to the girl. And, um, at that point, he said, "You couldn't have called the city." I says, "Yes, I did call the city." Okay, that much he gave me. He reiterated it again and, and that was it. Okay? So at that point, I just said, um, I went on to the crimes. Okay? I didn't like how he digressed from what Mr. DeBilio said of Scranton and digressed to Hazleton and, and Wilkes-Barre. We live in Scranton and that's what I told the mayor and I am scared. I'm scared to live in this city with the crime rising. And I told him that. We may not have as high a crime rate as Wilkes-Barre or wherever he's stated, but it's rising in this area and I'm scared. And what I got from him was stuttering, mumbling. I couldn't understand him. The hand went like that. He turned his back on me. He said, "I got to go," very sarcastically. I didn't appreciate that. Okay? And right now, um, that's what I was left with, with his back to my face. And if I were undecided at this point with my vote, I wouldn't be any longer. Can I just have one more minute since this is my first time and probably my last time that I'll be here?
I can't give you another minute, Mary Ann, but finish your thought there.
Okay. Um, okay, I hope Mayor Doherty at this point is at least watching. Mayor, no one in this city should feel that they are not good enough to be respected by you, especially when one speaks to him with the utmost respect. He gets paid to be mayor. Okay? If he gets reelected, God help us all, how many more people will be ignored and feeling like a fool? Okay? I worked in the public and I never wanted to be rude to anybody and never was.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, thank you.